Can everyone take their seats, please? You too, Nora. Got the gavel. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out this evening. The meeting will come to order. Madam Clerk, would you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement? Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk’s Office in preparation of the Council Annual Meeting Notice dated January 2, 2020, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter. Thank you. Could we have the roll call, please? Mr. Bowman.
Here.
Ms. Hairston.
Here.
Ms. Little.
Here.
Mr. Naidoo.
Here.
Mr. O’Sullivan.
Here.
Mr. Barton.
Here.
President Fox.
Here.
Okay. So now it’s time for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I’d like Bill Rapp, the past commander of the American Legion, to come up and lead us, please.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the greatest country in the world. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, could you please read the notices regarding closed session and hearings and comments? A closed-session meeting is authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give her email a copy to the City Clerk’s Office at rlicatice@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda, or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you. Thank you. Now on to minutes for approval. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of regular and closed session of January 21st?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, on to reports. Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Council President. Good evening, everyone. So first, I want to talk about the Union County Surrogate, which is not something that we normally talk about. But the Union County surrogate comes to City Hall on the fourth Tuesday of each month to assist with free probate and estate planning. This month, the surrogate will be here on Tuesday, February 25th, from 5:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Hours are by appointment only. The office must have a copy of the will, death certificate, and information sheet prior to the appointment. Please call (908) 527-4280 to make an appointment. And that number again is (908) 527-4280 to make an appointment. Union County is celebrating Black History Month and the achievements of African-Americans in our community and beyond with a number of events throughout February. Please go to ucnj.org/BlackHistoryMonth for more information. I believe we have something happening in Summit at our next meeting.
Yes.
And I’m not going to talk about it now because I’m going to leave that to Councilwoman Hairston to talk about at another time.
Yes.
The next, there’s another organization through the Interfaith Council, and it’s an organization, it’s a group called Strong Teens Against Racism, or the STAR program. The next training day for Strong Teens Against Racism, or STAR, is Sunday, this Sunday, February 9th at 1:00 at Temple Sinai at 208 Summit Avenue, in Summit, obviously. STAR seeks to inspire individuals to catalyze social challenge by challenging injustice and inequality when they arise in interactions, institutions, and within themselves by building a trusting and empathetic community of teens who are committed. I pulled this from the flyer. It’s a little bit hard. Frankly, I don’t really understand it. I mean, I understand it, but bottom line is, it’s a really powerful training to facilitate teenagers to talk, to learn how to talk to their friends, and their maybe-not-friends, about racism with their white friends, their black friends, their Hispanic friends, whomever. It’s a very powerful program, and I hope that any number of kids can come. A lot of children have done, children, high schoolers, have done this from schools in the Summit area. Quite frankly, not so much from Summit High School, more from the private schools. And I think it’s a tremendous program, and they have moved on to provide workshops for reading about books, watching movies, and creating an opportunity to give them the language to talk about what’s going on in our country in terms of racism. So that’s this coming Sunday. If you know of anyone who you think might be interested, please let them know.
Nora, can I step in for a second? I just want to, I’m on the steering committee for a start, and I think you did a fabulous job explaining what it is, even though you said you didn’t really understand it. You did an amazing job. But I just wanted to point out that the session this coming Sunday is an informational session, so that’s a time when anyone can come and learn about the STAR program and see if they want to get involved. I just wanted to make that clear.
Great.
So just a slight correction or clarification.
Thank you very much. Yep. And if you are interested in finding out where the event is, obviously, as I said, it’s at Temple Sinai, 208 Summit Avenue. Sorry, I’m a little off track. Anyway, the next thing I was going to talk about is the Summit Free Market Building. If you’ve been to the Summit Municipal Transfer Station lately, you may have noticed that the work has finally begun on the new Summit Free Market Building. We are thrilled that the foundation has been poured, and we are hoping for mild weather winter, mild winter weather, so that construction can continue. The Summit Conservancy is still raising funds needed to complete the building project. If you are able to support this project in any way, you need to understand, this keeps reusable items out of the waste stream, it saves the city from paying disposable fees, and it provides residents with an opportunity to get things that they may want or need for free. Please go to summitconservancy.org to donate. And that’s it. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And now on to Michael Rogers, the City Administrator, for his report.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. So the city remains in close contact with the Westfield Regional Health Department on developments related to the coronavirus. Although there are 11 reported places, cases in the U.S., there is no confirmed case in New Jersey. While the Center for Disease Control considers the coronavirus to be a serious public health concern, current information indicates that the immediate health risk to the general public is considered low at this time. However, the flu virus continues to impact our area. If you have not already done so, please consider getting a flu shot. The city will post updates on the city website and on these health issues, as well as others, as they become available. Note from Department of Community Services about recycling. While curbside recycling guidelines remain unchanged, the city is only able to accept plastics 1, 2, and 5 at the municipal transfer station. The global market for recycling is changing, which impacts what we are able to accept at the transfer station. Please check the city website for updates and more information. And that is all I have for tonight, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you. And I’m going to skip the Council President’s report because we have two presentations tonight. The first one, we have with us Vivian Furman and Estelle Fournier of the Summit Public Art Committee, and they’re going to speak to us about the Promenade Fountain. So come on up, please.
Hello, good evening. My name is Estelle Fournier. I live on 115 Maple Street in Summit, and my last name is spelled F-O-U-R-N-I-E-R.
And I’m Vivian Furman Ruben. I left it off of the presentation because it didn’t look right. Wrapped around, sorry, Julian. My last name is spelled F-U-R-M-A-N. I live at 10 Fernwood Road in Summit.
So thank you for inviting us to speak here tonight in front of City Council. We are here representing Summit Public Art. So Picasso once said, “Art washes away from the soul, the dust of everyday life.” Summit Public Art brings public art to Summit, and we’ve done that for 18 years. And I hope we’ve shown over the year that public arts help bring and create a vibrant and culturally diverse community. So we’re here to talk about the Promenade Fountain and the possibility of creating a permanent art installation at the fountain, at the promenade. We’re here to gauge interest and to see if we all can work together to make it a reality.
Thank you, Estelle. So we titled this “The Promenade Fountain, a Jewel in the Rough,” because we really think the fountain is a jewel.
You need to speak into the microphone.
Oh, I’m sorry. I said, “We titled this presentation ‘The Promenade Fountain, a Jewel in the Rough’ because we think the fountain is a jewel. The first picture you see is the way the fountain currently looks in the winter, and it looks this way approximately six months out of the year. And as you can see, there’s discoloration. The fountain has, you know, the material has eroded with time, the medallions are missing. It’s not a great-looking fountain as it currently exists. I’m going to turn, Estelle, would you move on to the next? The next is a picture of the fountain in six months, in the summer and in the spring. There is an art piece by a woman named Kate Dodd, which is no longer there, was a temporary art piece being installed. And in the summer and spring, of course, you have that wonderful sound and the fabulous white foam that comes off of the areas that jut out of the fountain wall. And we really think that the fountain has a lot going for it, and we just, you know, want to enhance it. I just want to add that this is a significant signature piece for our city. We don’t want to lose it. We want to make it better than ever. It’s very heavily trafficked, and of course, that’s great. Okay, so the fountain, the art installation goals, as Summit Public Art sees them, as we see them, is to enhance the overall promenade presence. Right now, it’s highly, you know, it’s attended by many people, but we want even more people coming to see it and to be focused on the fountain and to walk by the shops as they go to it, and visual vibrancy. We see this enhancement as part of the overall promenade transformation that’s taken place over the last few years. The fountain, we think, will become a beautiful and impactful focal point for the promenade. Very important. It will look great in all seasons. And last but not least, we respect what SDI did in bringing this fountain to this community. And so the structure will remain, including the outcroppings. So that original fountain isn’t going, it’s just being enhanced.
And so we strongly believe, with the past experience of bringing art and public art to Summit, that having a public art installation at the fountain would be a draw for the community, would be a draw for the visitors, for the shopper, for the residents, and they will take pride in having a beautiful permanent art installation, because we’re talking permanent art installation. It’s also going to impact positively the local downtown if we can bring more people to the downtown. And we all know that people are looking for experience, and people already recognize Summit as having a vibrant community, a vibrant downtown, a diverse cultural scene. It’s not only shopping, it’s also eating out, but also vibrant cultural offerings. So we hope that that would add and enhance what we already can offer in Summit. The negative, we quickly talked about it, I mean, we can go back at those images, you know, it’s discolored, it lack color, and it’s especially obvious in the winter, in the wintertime. And so we feel like by using a public artwork, a permanent art installation, we can really enhance what is already existing.
So I just want to add one thing to what Estelle said. You know, the notion of a total experience, you can go shopping at a strip mall, but coming to Summit, there’s a lot going on. There are these charming shops, there are lovely cafes, and there is art all over town that you can experience, and this would be one of the go-to places. It would kind of be the jewel in the crown in the downtown area as we see it. Okay, what would it be? So of course, we want it to be beautiful, and we want it to have broad-based appeal. The Silver Sentinel Tree has gotten a lot of approval beyond our wildest dreams, so we would hope to do the same thing. I’m so sorry. Did you hear me, or do I need to say what I said?
You’re good.
Okay, good. And as Estelle said, it’s a permanent art installation. We think ceramic mosaic tile is the way to go because it’s resistant to stains and water, and so therefore, it’s essentially maintenance-free. And of course, it’s been used for millennia in fountains and pools, et cetera. And again, this installation would be incorporated into the current structure. It would be on the wall over which the water flows, facing into the promenade. And the reason I’m making this perfectly clear is some people, I confused some people, and they thought it was the back that faces the parking garage, and it is not. Okay?
We want to show you a couple of examples of what could be done at the promenade. We gather, I mean, with the MTA and the New York Transit Authority has many wonderful mosaic mural all over New York City. So we’ve taken the example, and interestingly enough, while we did our research, we found out that all the, the majority of these artists worked with a mosaic fabricator called Mioto Mosaic Art Studio. They’re based in upstate New York. The Stephen Muro is a master craftsman and is a preferred fabricator for all those artists. So we have them right there, not far from us. So this is an example of 66th Street Lincoln Center Station by an artist Nancy Shapiro, who is now deceased, but we thought it was very beautiful. There is, in this next slide, two different examples. On the left is a train station in Larchmont, New York by artist Joy Teller, floral, very beautiful, vibrant color. On the right is a public fountain in Austin, Texas by actually a New Jersey artist, Deborah Agoles. And last but not least, this is another example of a public fountain commissioned by the city of Walnut Creek, California, made by artist Jason Middlebrook. If you remember, Jason Middlebrook worked with Summit Public Art before. He was the one who made the mosaic mushroom which was installed at the Village Green. So we have plenty of resource here, really, and the perfect place to bring beautiful public art to Summit, you know, in the tri-state area. Implementation, so we, Summit Public Art, would be willing to take the lead for the art selection, art management process, meaning we would be willing to put out a call for artists, select the artists, oversee the installation, and we estimate that it might take between two or three-year maximum, but let’s say two-year from beginning to end of the process, because also there is an issue of funding. What needs to happen right now, and if everybody is on board, is like, we would like to create a task force, a group of volunteer, of people who could work together, members of the downtown community, the downtown business community, the city of Summit, Summit Public Art, and start working and brainstorming and get the project off the ground. And lastly, also, we would like to get assurance from the city of Summit that the fountain is structurally and mechanically sound. We don’t want to invest all that time and money and find out that it needs to be destroyed in two years, you know, taken apart. So the big...
So I’m going to talk about funding. The estimated cost is between $75,000 and $100,000. We’ve spoken with a few artists, and that really is the cost because this is very detailed work, all the tiles are hand-cut, it takes a while, it’s a lot of effort. Obviously, this is going to require a partnership between the city of Summit, SPA, and optimally Summit Downtown, Inc., because they really stand to benefit a lot from having this additional incentive for people to come and visit Summit. And, you know, presumably, there are more than 30, well, let me get to the money first. So cost-sharing assumptions. I’m sure you’ve all done renovation in your house, I know I have, so I went with the higher price because it never comes in at the lower price. So the maximum cost in the assumption that I wrote up here is $105,000, including lighting. As you know, you’ve seen some of the pieces have been lit at night, and public art is spectacular at night as well as during the day. So we’d want the fountain lit. We’re assuming a city contribution of at least $35,000, so that would be a third. Then we’re assuming an SDI contribution of at least $35,000. And if everybody’s on board, and we can get this going, and Summit Public Art approves it, and the city approves it, and hopefully SDI approves it, or another partner, SPA is committing that they could come up to, but not exceeding, $35,000. And that would be our promise to you, and that is a sizable chunk. But we can’t do it unless we know that the other rest of the money is there, you know? Okay, so SPA assumptions. Well, some of this is going to be a little bit repetitive. Since we’ve been doing this for almost 18 years, we feel that we are the appropriate party to take the lead in identifying the art and managing the whole process of the art. City and optimally SDI, we want to know that you are committed to funding your share, as specified on the prior page. And I think I heard this magical word, I wrote it down somewhere, David, you used it.
Oh, I’m troubled now.
Yeah, you did. It was, it’s a tax write-off because this is capital improvement. And I think that when you look at the fountain, and I looked it up online, you know, capital improvement does mean improving something that’s kind of falling apart, and it’s an investment, and I think that, you know, hopefully, the city could find funding for that. And then SDI, again, there are a minimum of 30 business people, you know, shops in the city, you know, that’s not a terribly burdensome thing to save between $800 and $1,000 each to kick it in. And as I said, if you guys can find the money, then we will find the money and have it ready for this. I have a bullet item here. Each partner is responsible for raising its agreed-upon share of the art installation. We’ll take care of our 35 grand, but you guys have to take care of your money. And the reason is, we don’t have the muscle or the manpower to go out and fundraise for your share, and SDI or someone else’s share. So we’re happy to accompany you and do presentations, whatever, but we rely on you to come up with your funds. And last but not least, this is a very creative group, Summit Public Art, I must tell you that, and they’re always coming up with really good ideas. So if we’re going to do this, we don’t want to wait eight years and start the project eight years from now. We’re willing to take this on now, and that’s why I wrote, “Early-stage activities start in the near future, optimally in 2020,” with, you know, creating the task force, starting to work on a call for artists, starting to work on our individual funding pieces. And that is the end of it, except for the last page, which we’ve written and says the time is right. So with that, thank you for listening to us, and do you have any questions?
Does anyone in council have any questions?
Yes.
David.
Okay. So as you guys all know, I’m a big supporter of public art, and that’s, and there’s a reason for that, and I want to kind of explain that, because I think the word “public” should be the focus of it. And the reason that’s important is because there are plenty of people who don’t get a chance necessarily to go and go to museums, but the idea of public art is it’s there in front of you. So you could be a little kid walking down the street, and you get to get that art experience, get to live it. And I think it does make a difference in this community, a significant difference in this community, because you walk around every year, there’s different pieces of art that you get just for free, just because you live here or visit here, and that’s a big deal. We shouldn’t forget that. There’s people who do not have the opportunity to go every single day to New York City and go to the Met or go to the MoMA and do all of this stuff, and yet they get to see new artists coming into town. And Summit Public Art didn’t necessarily explain it, for those of you who don’t know and who are listening to this or what have you, you know, this is all privately funded. The word Summit Public Art sounds like, well, taxpayer money has been going towards funding art in this town. It hasn’t. It’s people writing checks and donations that get all this art that people get to enjoy. I think I understand that we live in budgetary constraints, but I think this is not necessarily one of those projects that are there for, for a year or two. This is a long-term project. This will outlast all of us. You know, that fountain’s been there for decades now. It’s outlasted the people who designed it, probably, and similarly, this project would. And for the cost that’s being proposed, it is not significant, I think, in the overall scheme of things, when one looks at it that way. You know, we buy trucks, we buy equipment, we do all of this stuff, and we find the money for that. This is not, and I do think downtown should pay, because you could go on the internet right now, and you could do public art, property values, and you will come up with plenty of articles that say that property values are enhanced because of public art around them. And it makes a difference to the downtown businesses, not just foot traffic, but the fact the realty property values itself. So I would say that we should look at this very seriously. I think SDI should look at it very seriously. If there’s grant money, so much the better. We should explore whether our grant writer can look into whether or not there’s opportunities for working. But this is, you know, we talked about Summit Conservancy, and that is nonprofit, working with the city. This is city group, kind of quasi-city group, combined with the city, combined with business, and so it’s a private-public partnership. And those things we’ve done also in other things. We did it with having the kind of seating area that’s outside of, you know, two places out there, and we did that as a public-private partnership, because we wanted to enhance traffic into the downtown, so we can also do this. So I would be supportive of this. I know that people are looking right now, this is budget season, I know that we’re looking very carefully at our numbers, and I get that we need to do that, obviously, but one should have a long-term perspective of how one uses capital expenditures, and it’s not simply on looking at, okay, we need these things, but we need to also invest in those aesthetics that make it the reason we live in this community. There’s intangible reasons why we live here, and they’re not simply roads or trucks or mortar and brick. That’s my comments.
And I wanted to add something about why we felt strongly about so-only funding part of it. You know, what Summit Public Art does is bringing temporary public art to summits. And, you know, we cannot, we want to continue doing that, so we cannot put all the money we have toward a permanent art installation. That said, we’ve been planning and thinking that maybe there would be another opportunity that arise for a permanent art installation. So we’ve been creating a fund and putting money aside every year from our prior, all the private donation for a permanent art installation, and we think this might be the perfect project for Summit Public Art to take on.
And I just want to add one thing to what David said. Actually, I’ve had a number of people who are coming to Summit and buying in Summit, they’re young, they’re in their 30s, say, you know what, we got off the train, we saw some of the art, we thought, we like this place, because it’s something that people want now. Art has become an important part of everyone’s lives. Public art is in all the big cities. If you’re in Manhattan, you’re seeing it all the time, and wow, you’re moving to the suburbs, that’s a scary thing, and all of a sudden, you come to a city, and it’s sophisticated, and it has public art, and it has different things. It’s quite an incentive, and it does affect real estate prices, I think.
I agree. Councilwoman Little.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I think I’m also in support of this. I think it’s a real centerpiece of the town and something we should look at investing in. I was just wondering if you have already approached SDI and what their response was, and if there’s support from SDI.
So SDI, one of the board members from SDI is on our board. We haven’t, we’ve shared the presentation with her. I have offered to meet, well, we’ve offered to meet with Nancy, but I think Nancy prefers to, for us to meet first with a board member who is on our committee, so we will do that, but they’re aware of what’s going on and will have further conversation. Because clearly, for people who don’t know, SDI was, and the Summit Downtown invested in that fountain, funded the original fountain in the first place.
But while we’re happy to approach SDI, I want to, you know, restate, you carry much more weight than we do, so if you can join us, or join us in a sub, are you laughing because this is not the case, Nora?
No, I’m, I’m, I am in favor of this.
Okay. No, but I mean, we need the support...
There’s a lot of moving parts.
There are a lot of moving parts. Now, you know, that’s the other reason, we’re hoping that we can limit this to this triumvirate, if you will, the city, Summit Public Art, and SDI, because it’s simpler. Once you start going out and trying to have, appealing to multiple... Once you start going out and trying to have, appealing to multiple organizations for grants, you know, it makes it that much longer and that much harder to come to consensus about anything. And these are the real stakeholders, so.
Okay. Any other questions from council?
Thank you.
Got a question?
Yes.
If you do not get all the three major stakeholders, you guys are committed, the city's the third, second, and the third is SDI, if you don't get commitments from the other two, are you willing to pursue other sources of fundraising?
We don't have the manpower because we are so overwhelmed with what we are currently doing.
Right.
We're looking at, hopefully, installing a third mural right now, which is very costly. We then also possibly a fourth. There's a lot of new art coming in, in the fall, and every year we go through this again. There's some other initiatives that I can't speak to that are going to really wow you. And you know how it goes on committees, like.
I do.
Yep.
We just don't have the manpower.
No, I, I'm just asking.
Yeah. I wish we could say yes, but.
Okay. No, I just need, no, thank you.
It's reality.
Any other questions from council? Any questions from the public? I guess not. Okay.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
I think this project, just to wrap up, I want to thank both of you for all the work you've done on this project. I think it's a great idea. I think this is, you know, it was a long time coming, doing some work on this fountain. And this is really placemaking. This is creating, you know, the Promenade Park already is an attraction, but doing something like this will, will really be, sort of, will make it really, really special and.
We think so.
Really an attraction in downtown, and I think it's well worth trying to find the funding to do this.
Great.
So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we'll, we'll continue to work with you on how to make this happen, hopefully.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, ladies. And thank you for all the work you do all year long.
Yes.
And to all of Summit Public Art, everyone else.
And you two have been. May I also say.
Vivian and Estelle have been the co-chairs of Summit Public Art for at least four years.
Four years.
Right. And are stepping down. They're no longer the co-chairs. She's done a phenomenal job, and so I'm happy to welcome Marie and Shelley Sami to be the new co-chairs. But you guys are not going anywhere, right?
No. We're here.
Although you're leaving in good hands with Marie and Shelley.
Oh, we are. And Debbie is the co-chair with Marie of Art Selection, so.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. So for our second presentation, we have Henry Bassman, who will be, he's the commander of the American Legion, Lindsey Street Post, and he'll be speaking to us about Four Chaplains Day.
Let me just see if I can bring up the slides. Okay, and then let's pick off the outline. Good, okay. Mayor Rades, council president, talks, members of council, and people who live in Summit. I'm here tonight to share the story of the Four Chaplains. Yesterday, February 3rd, was the 77th anniversary of the sinking of the U.S. Army transport Dorchester and the selfless acts of four Army chaplains who were aboard. February 3rd is now commemorated as Four Chaplains Day. When I was in public school, I learned about Four Chaplains during what was called Brotherhood Week, a commemoration organized by the National Conference of Christians and Jews to respond to anti-immigrant, anti-Catholic, and anti-Jewish sentiment in the 1920s. But here's their remarkable story. The troop ship Dorchester departed St. John's, Newfoundland for an American base in Greenland on January 23rd, 1943. Four chaplains were aboard the ship. Methodist Minister George Fox, Rabbi Alexander Goode, Dutchery Form Minister Reverend Clark Poling, and a Roman Catholic priest, Father John Washington. These four chaplains were first lieutenants and had met each other during their training at Army Chaplain School. But like so many other World War II people, they came together from different backgrounds. George Fox was born in Lewiston, Pennsylvania. When he was 17, he left school, joined the Army, and served in World War I as a medical corps assistant. He was awarded the Silver Star, Purple Heart, and French Croix de Guerre. After the war, he attended Illinois Wesleyan University and the Boston University School of Theology, where he was ordained as a Methodist minister. In 1942, Fox volunteered to serve as an Army chaplain. He began active duty on August 8th, 1942, the same day his son Wyatt enlisted in the Marine Corps. Rabbi Alexander D. Goode was born in Brooklyn, New York on May 10th, 1911, the son of a rabbi. He was ordained by the Hebrew Union College and later received a PhD from Johns Hopkins University. He originally applied to become a Navy chaplain, but he couldn't pass the physical because of his eyesight. So after the attack on Pearl Harbor, he applied again, this time the Army accepted him. Clark V. Poling was a, born in Columbus, Ohio, the son of an evangelical minister who was rebaptized in 1936 as a Baptist minister. Poling studied at Yale University's Divinity School and was ordained in the Reformed Church in America. With the outbreak of World War II, he applied to serve as an Army chaplain. John P. Washington was local to New Jersey. He was born in Newark, studied at Seton Hall, graduating with an AB degree. He entered Immaculate Conception Seminary in Darlington, New Jersey, and was ordained as a priest. Shortly after Pearl Harbor attack, he received his appointment as a chaplain in the United States Army. The Four Chaplains were aboard the Dorchester when shortly after midnight on February 3rd, this ship was struck by three torpedoes from a German submarine. The torpedoes tore a hole in the starboard side of the ship from below the waterline to the top deck. All electricity was knocked out. The ship was without light or a public address system. Panic set in. Many were trapped below decks. Abandoned ship could only be passed along from man to man. The Four Chaplains swung into action, calmed the men, helped the wounded, handed out life vests, and directed men to lifeboats. One sailor, Petty Officer John J. Mahoney, tried to re-enter his cabin, but Rabbi Goode stopped him. Mahoney, concerned about the cold Arctic air, explained he had forgotten his gloves. Never mind, Goode responded, I have two pairs. The rabbi then gave the petty officer his own gloves, and in retrospect, Mahoney realized that Rabbi Goode was not conveniently carrying two pairs of gloves and that the rabbi had decided to stay on the Dorchester. When there were no more life vests on the ship, the Four Chaplains gave theirs to four other young men. One witness, Private William V. Bednar, found himself floating in oil-smeared water, surrounded by dead bodies and debris. He said, "I could hear men crying, pleading, praying. I could also hear the chaplains preaching courage. Their voices were the only thing that kept me going." As the Dorchester sank, the Four Chaplains were seen linked arm-in-arm, praying as they went under. According to some reports, survivors could hear English, Hebrew, and Latin mixed in with prayers of the chaplains. 672 of the 902 officers, enlisted men, merchant seamen, and civilian workers aboard the Dorchester died. Many of the survivors owed their lives to the courage and leadership exhibited by the Four Chaplains, who in sacrificing their lives, created a unique legacy of brotherhood. The Four Chaplains were posthumously awarded the distinguished service cross, the second-highest Army Award for bravery, and the Purple Heart. There were many in Congress who wanted to bestow the Medal of Honor on the men, but were prevented from doing so because to earn the Medal of Honor, you have to be under direct fire. In 1960, Congress unanimously awarded a special gold medal to the families of the Four Chaplains in their memory. We need to understand that in the 1940s, our country was sharply divided along religious lines. Until the Dorchester, there was no mention in print of Catholics, Protestants, and Jews working together in this manner, especially in prayer. It was a transformational, transformational experience for America. Today, there is a memorial to all chaplains at Arlington Cemetery that is dedicated to the Four Chaplains and all chaplains who served. But there is in my mind another memorial that is so ordinary that it's not recognized. A few years ago, while visiting Arlington Cemetery, I walked over to the section with the newest graves, most of which were for men and women from Afghanistan and Iraq. On the row of the newest graves, I came upon these two, a grave of a Jewish soldier and next to it, the grave of a Muslim soldier. In many countries, these two men would be mortal enemies. In America, they were brothers in arms who were laid to rest beside one another and who will be together forever. That is the continuing legacy of the Four Chaplains.
Thank you, Henry. I think it's a really great reminder of.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I said, I think that this story is a really great reminder of, of the importance of unity amongst all different people in this country.
Yes.
And I think, you know, at a time like this, we need this kind of unifying message, so thank you for bringing this to us. Does anyone from council have any questions or comments on this?
Thank you.
Anyone?
Thank you, Henry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill?
I just want to add, I'm Bill Rapp, 31 Dale Drive in Summit, and I'm past commander. I just want to add something to what Henry said. The memorialization of heroes like this are extremely important to the survivors and families of our veterans. We here in Summit owe that to them. And we owe that to, especially to the survivors of the families of soldiers of World War II and Korea, of those people who died from Summit. That can be seen in the memorial on the Village Green, sort of. We're talking about capital expenditures earlier, Mr. Nadeau. Henry and I, over a year ago, started a campaign to erect a memorial for the two Medal of Honor winners from World War I. It was a very successful campaign, and we just barely made it. We will be finishing up with the medallions of the three types of Medal of Honor for the three branches. That will be coming, hopefully, when the next, the next couple of months, we've got the last final amounts, and it will then be a very beautiful monument. What we weren't able to do was come up with enough money to be able to donate to the city council for the refurbishment of the World War II and Korean War memorial, which is in terrible shape. Those panels, you can barely read the names of those brave heroes. Some of the panels are actually pulling away from the monument. It really is a disgrace to see how those have deteriorated. And I remember coming to council and hearing a certain council president say that city of Summit owes it to those veterans, and that the city would somehow come up with the money to help restore that. So I'm going to call in that chip and please ask, and I will beg on behalf of the American Legion and veterans, that the city somehow come up with money in the capital plans and capital budget to restore that monument on the Village Green. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I?
Yes.
So, so if I recall, Bill, I said exactly those things the last time you guys came, when I was council president, and you came with a proposal dealing with honoring after 100 years Medal of Honor winners, and we got that done. And I said, and I meant it then and I mean it now, that if we have, we have to honor those who serve this country. No ifs, ands, or buts. I have not seen a proposal, though, for how much it would cost, but I will support a proposal for refurbishing those, that site, in order to make sure that people can read those names, absolutely without a doubt.
That is something that is our next project, and I'm glad you suggested that.
Yes.
Henry and I will be working on that, and it is my hope that we'll be able to, prior to Memorial Day, come up with a proposal for a project to refurbish that. It's still in the early stages, but we will be doing that, and it would be my hope that we will get full support from the city council for the refurbishment of that monument.
Because a few years ago, we started the Hometown Heroes Program. Most of the members of council supported that. When that came up, that was in two years, two years ago, we started that. We had the Medal of Honor winners, last two years we did that. We want to make sure that people understand, you know, sometimes people use patriotism very lightly, and people use, what I will say is fake patriotism, about very easily just saying things about, you know, what this country stands for. One of the things that this country stands for is that we honor those who have decided to put on the uniform, to go out there, defend its values, and that have paid the ultimate sacrifice. As I said, there's no ifs, ands, or buts about that from.
Great. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Council President, I, I do want to just echo, because both gentlemen will remember my fondest memories as a child, as being a daughter of the Post 322 American Legion, which was originated as an African-American post and was a very vibrant celebration in Summit, and with a parade, and it was a wonderful time that I remember in my childhood. So along with you, David, I really look forward to seeing your proposal and honoring.
He's one of the most beloved members of the Post at that time. When I took over as commander, I was the only non-African-American member of the Post leadership. And we are working very hard with Reverend Harriel now to, to turn around and recruit more members of the African-American community.
Awesome.
And it, it is becoming more and more of a, an inclusive organization. Matter of fact, in our recruitment poster, we have, we have a picture of one of the founding members of the, of the.
Of the Post, yes.
Of the Post is prominently, prominently displayed.
I emphasize whenever I speak that the American Legion is for all veterans.
Excellent.
And we want all veterans to feel welcome and become members and to receive the help that those of us who are experienced in helping veterans get their benefits and get respect and sometimes just listening to their story. And that's very important to all of us.
And restoring for our children.
Yes.
Our children need to hear these stories so they can have pride in service. That's what I am so happy about, so I just want to thank you.
We will never leave any man behind.
You know what? Thank you so much, gentlemen. We, we have to move on with the agenda, but thank you.
Can I say one personal comment?
Yes.
Good night, Leo. You're going to bed.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Okay. So at this point, we're going to open the meeting up to public comments. Are there any, and this is, members of the public have an opportunity to comment on any matter that is not on the agenda tonight. Do I have any comments? Okay. So we'll be moving on now to resolutions. And the first resolutions are finance. Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. Resolution number 6995 authorizes the transfer of appropriations within the operating budget from accounts with a surplus to those within sufficient funds. This is a regular occurrence until the operating budget is adopted. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
All those in favor?
I agree.
Oh, roll call.
Roll call.
Oh, roll call. Right, I realized. Okay, Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Harrison.
Aye.
Ms. Little.
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo.
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan.
Aye.
Mr. Vartan.
Aye.
President Fox.
Aye. Okay, Councilmember...
It passes, yes.
Right. Councilmember Vartan, number two, finance.
Thank you, Council President. This resolution authorizes an amendment to the temporary municipal operating budget. To be clear, there is no increase. This is a clerical adjustment. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
All those in favor? Oh, wait, wait, any comments? Forgot that. David, did you have a comment?
No, I was just going to pass you the note to say you had nothing for comments.
Yeah, you're supposed to kick me. Okay, any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion, that resolution passes. Finance number three, Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This resolution authorizes an agreement with the firm Wilkots &amp; Company for 2020 audit services for an amount not to exceed $66,000. This is the same firm that was responsible for audit services last year, and the contract amount has increased by $1,000. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion passes. Finance number four, Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This resolution is to authorize an agreement with the law firm of Hawkins, Delafield, and Wood to act as the city's bond counsel in 2020 for an amount not to exceed $60,000. This is the same firm that acted as the city's bond counsel last year. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes. So now we have three resolutions from Capitol Projects. Councilmember Little.
Thank you, Council President. First, Capitol Projects' resolution is number 6980, and this is to authorize the city engineer to execute permit applications on behalf of the city to go to the NJDEP, NJDOT, and State of New Jersey and Union County. This is something that we started doing a few years ago. Periodically, the city engineer and the mayor are required to sign permit documents on behalf of the city, and these would typically come to council each time, which delayed the process and often the project. And this, we started doing this a few years ago, that this blanket resolution authorizes the city engineer and mayor to sign these throughout the year as required. And I would ask that council approve this resolution.
Second.
Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Capitol Projects, number two.
Well, the next two Capitol Project resolutions involve our trees. So the first one is number two, which is number 6949, and that's to authorize submission of Tree City USA recertification application and annual accomplishment report. And we are proud that this will be our 24th year as a Tree City in Summit. The Tree City USA designation recognizes communities that have proven their commitment to effective, ongoing community forestry, and that's certainly true here in Summit. It's a big part of what makes Summit special. And, you know, we've talked before about some of the things we're doing with our trees and increasing the planting of the trees with our ongoing commitment to plant 1,000 trees over the next four years and replace a lot of the trees that have been lost in the recent storms. So I am happy to present this resolution to council and ask that we approve this.
Second.
Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on. Capitol Projects, number three, Councilwoman Little.
Thank you. This is resolution number 6948, which authorizes the professional service agreement for our 2020 city forester services to keep those trees going and planted and healthy. So this is to authorize that we, again, retain the services of John Linsen, not to exceed $55,000, and I ask that we approve this resolution.
Second.
Any comments from members of council? Councilmember Naidoo.
Thank you, Council President. In addition to what Councilwoman Little said, just so the rest of council knows, we've asked that our city forester come and give monthly reports...
That's correct.
...to the Capitol Projects Committee and to DCS about the progress that he's making. One of the things that we have already in our existing tree ordinance is that when people do construction and when certain sized trees are removed, they have an obligation to either replace that tree, obviously not the same size, but the smaller caliber tree, or alternatively pay into a fund for the ability of the city to purchase trees in replacement. We have lost a significant amount of our tree canopy. Part, I previously spoke about my support of art, as everyone knows, support the idea of also a tree canopy, because that is also why people come to live in Summit. There is a feeling of a leafy, green suburb that you come to, and that's something people who, from cities, want to have. And so it's important, and we need to have our city forester go ahead and enforce laws. It's no use having laws in the books that are not being enforced. And so this is something that's going to be new, but we hope that this will be something that will make sure we get to the goals that we are seeking with our tree canopy.
Thank you, Councilmember Naidoo. That's good news to hear that that's going to be happening. Any other comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes, and we're on to law and labor. Councilmember Bowman.
Thank you, Council President. Resolution 6950 is an amending the joint meeting compensation contract concerning a contribution to the Summit Area Public Foundation. At the request of the Summit SAPF, we renewed the, or reviewed the contract, and basically we simplified the language, but in the end, we're streamlining the process and basically in 1899, just so you get a little history here, 1899, the first ordinance basically said all council people would be unpaid. So we're all volunteers up here.
Wait, wait, council, but not the mayor?
It doesn't say the mayor!
Nor you found the loophole!
But congratulations, you're one of us.
It's okay, I'm good.
So basically, this role is one that is compensated, and as such, the agreement is that we would, after the tax effect, would make a contribution to the Summit Area Public Foundation, and that any tax liability would be on that council person, and that this would be done in a timely basis. As that individual that represents the joint meeting, I take this pretty seriously, so, you know, recognize that I usually try to make sure that I get it in there before April 30th, which I believe is the Summit Area Foundation's fiscal year-end. So I move this resolution.
I second it.
Any comments from members of council? Councilmember Naidoo.
Thank you, Council President. Councilman Bowman, the attachment that we have with regard to the agreement, that's just illustrative of what this would be for this year or the previous year, and then for subsequent years, correct?
Correct. The attachment basically was to demonstrate the changes that were made to the contract.
Thank you.
I would recommend that in the future, what we do is create something similar to the signing power that the mayor and the city engineer have for permits, and do the similar kind of thing, so we can approve it once, and then this can just happen informally without coming back to council each year for approval.
I think that is done. It's just that we changed the contract, that's the only reason it's coming to...
Okay, yes, all right. It's a perpetual contract. We just did it because of the amendments to this one. Okay, so in the future, it will go on that way. Okay, thank you for the clarification. Any other comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Last...
So the last law on labor is Resolution 6944, which is Certified, Certification of Compliance with the United States Equal Employment Opportunity Commission's Enforcement Guidance of the Consideration of Arrests and Convention Records in the Employment Decisions under Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. Basically, what we're saying is that we, as elected officials, must ensure that the municipality follows the equal employment opportunity rules and regulations that were set forth in 1964, and as such, we signed that agreement today, and we are memorializing that in tonight's resolution. I move this resolution.
I second.
Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we're now moving on to the consent agenda. Generally, this is taken as a whole and voted on, but before we do that, I want to just open it up in case there are any comments on any items on the consent agenda from either council or the public. Okay, hearing none? Do I have a motion? Oh, sorry.
I just want to comment, one of the consent agenda items for Capitol Projects is that we are advertising bids for curbside collection and marketing of recyclable materials, and I just wanted to add on to something that city administrator Roger said earlier, is that the recycling landscape is changing drastically, and this is coming out of my committee, and it's something that we're going to be talking about a lot. The markets for recyclable materials are drying up. We've heard a lot about China isn't taking recyclable materials. Now, India has shut down a lot of the markets for different mixed paper and other items for recycling, and it's just the landscape is changing. It's costing municipalities more and more and more every year, and the restrictions are going to become also greater and greater each year. So while we heard today that the transfer station is now only accepting one, two, and five plastics, that is probably what we're going to be looking at with these bids coming in for curbside collection as well, as well as most companies are now instituting contamination charges for wet cardboard, for food waste, for anything else that's going into the recycling stream. So we're all going to have to be much more aware of what the restrictions are in recycling, much more careful about what we're putting into the recycling stream, and I think more importantly, we're going to have to go back to the reduce, reuse, recycle, and focus a lot more on the first two pieces of that as individuals. And this is something that individual households can really do to make an impact on your taxes. We talk a lot about taxes. This is something really important that individuals can do to make that impact, because this is going to cost us more and more as a city, and the more and more that we can get residents involved, educated, and understanding of this, and helping us to do this. There's only so much that we can do as a government. We've done the signaling plastics, you know, we've done some ordinances, but really, this is going to be more and more on us as individuals as well. So I just wanted to point that out, that this is something on the consent agenda, but we are going to be just talking about this more and more, because it's going to impact us a lot over the next year or so.
Thank you, Councilmember Little.
Thank you.
Mayor?
I agree. May I just add, though, that we don't know...
Yes.
...exactly what's happening yet, and sometimes people hear us talking about things might be happening, and they start to get worried and concerned and think it's happening tomorrow. That's not the case. We will be sending out a lot of information from the city as we fully understand exactly what we're going to be dealing with. Everyone's going to have to be a little more concerned, as Beth, Councilwoman Little is saying, we need to be concerned and aware and more focused on reduce and reuse rather than recycle. Recycle's always been, you know, the lowest-hanging fruit, but nothing's happening tomorrow. And the city will be absolutely vigilant, and they're focused, we are focused, on getting information out to the community when we know exactly what's going to happen. We do not know now what is going to happen, but we will get the information out, and it's priority number one about letting the community know what's going to happen. And as soon as we know, the community will know.
That's correct, and I just, in that vein, I just wanted to reiterate that this is coming, and that's what we're looking at, since it was in the consent agenda, and we don't usually talk about that, but thank you for that clarification as well.
Okay, any other comments on the consent agenda? Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, are there any council members' comments or new business? Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. I had the opportunity last week to tour the Union County College campus with their president, Dr. McMenamin. I, it was there that I learned that there's a team of four people from Union County that's going to be competing in a NASA challenge in Houston, Texas. One of the students is from Summit. His name is Dimitro Govdon, and this is an exciting opportunity for them, as they're one of only two county colleges in the country that's been invited to participate. So they are raising money to send the team down there, so you can go online and find out some more information about that. So that was my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Naidoo.
Thank you. As I'm sitting in the former Mike McTurnan seat, I will do what Mike would do, what I've done, which is to announce that the Summit High School's next production is Mamma Mia. And so if you haven't bought a ticket, you should go out, and sure, it will be sold-out performances, because Summit High School runs an absolutely fabulous program. So go out there and see Mamma Mia. ABBA music, how can you go wrong?
And I'll take a page out of the Councilmember McTurnan playbook, too, and point out that Friday night is the Big Band Dance, which is the Summit High School Big Band. They perform, it's a great night, it's at the Grand Summit Hotel, and it's dinner, it's dancing, and music that's played by our own Summit High School students and vocalists as well, and it's a great night, so I hope to see some of you there as well. Any other comments from members of council? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, adjourned. Okay.